I'd like to call a meeting to order. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Mayor Moss, yes, we do. Councilmember Contreras present, Councilmember Gilliam present, Councilmember Rehmbaum present, Mayor Protem Young present, and Councilmember Crummell present.
Thank you. At this time, would you please stand? Pastor Ted Kitchens from Cross Chapel is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. Pastor Ted.
Sure. Play with me, please. Father, thank you for the fact that Willow Park is a healthy community because, Lord, we believe good people and godly people and unselfish servants like those around the court here in front of us. Our prayer tonight is that you give this council wisdom and insight so that they make decisions that would enhance the quality of life for everyone living in Willow Park, that this meeting would be an easy one for them, and that their own personal lives would be enhanced and more productive because of their unselfish gift of time to this community. So, Lord, we pray over the meeting. May it be productive for your glory and honor and for the health of the community, and we pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one public comment to start. Ms. Frances Horch.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, thank you for your commitment to serve our city and the opportunity to speak before you. Chief Franklin and Chief Snyder, thank you for all you do to keep our city safe. My name is Frances Horch, and I reside at 901 San Bass Court. I want to thank Mayor Moss for your encouraging words during the last council meeting, for your sincerity in recognizing the homeowner's complaints, and for your promise to make things right. I took your words to heart. I also want to thank the council members who were receptive to the homeowner's complaints and helped to clarify things. For your review, I am providing you an updated list of damages previously submitted to you along with photos. I reach out for your assistance for XIT and the city to repair the unresolved damages. During the last meeting, I appreciated Mayor Protem's pertinent questions, which showed that XIT met the design standards by excavating deep ditches and replacing driveway approaches per Jacob Martin's design, even if this design is inadequate given the homeowner's complaints concerning the easement approaches and topography changes. It also showed that XIT maintained their quality control despite periods of rain, cold weather, and the harshest of working conditions during a record-breaking heat wave. When tech stock reframed from working during red alert ozone days, XIT still showed up and continued to work while we watched from our air-conditioned homes and vehicles. XIT even endured the deplorable unsanitary conditions of a porta potty that was not cleaned in a timely manner and still followed the design standard. To be clear, we are grateful for the long overdue road and the improvement to our ditches. However, I do not believe a homeowner nor the city should have to settle for these improvements while disregarding serious concerns for safety, hazards, property values, and putting back less than was there before. I believe it is critical we follow the Mayor Protem's suggestion of determining what modifications and additions need to be implemented in the design before the city moves on. To move on and do nothing with these lessons learned would perpetuate the design inadequacies onto other unsuspecting homeowners. I also want to raise awareness of prevalent miscommunication and lack of transparency. Just shy of seven decades of life, I performed my first sit-in demonstration amidst a pile of concrete aggregate rubble to pause demolition work that had begun in my property without advance notice and clarification. This miscommunication was needlessly confusing, stressful, and was contrary to what you had promised, Mayor Moss. That is why I sincerely thank you for your intervention because it had an impact. XIT put it back the way it was, which the contractor had not been directed to do. You are a man of your word. Thank you, Mayor Moss. Suggestions for the future are improved communication, transparency for the homeowners from the beginning to the end, and that complaints be recognized and validated. Thank you for your time and assistance.
Thank you. Thank you. First matter is to approve the city council meeting minutes of May 28, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to review, and then do we have a motion?
Mayor and council, please note that I did email you a revised set of minutes, so when you approve, it will be those set of minutes that were approved. I'll make a motion to approve the revised minutes from May 28, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to consider installation of speed bumps on Crown Road. We have several people that like to speak. Mr. Dennis Evans.
Good evening, Mayor Moss and city council members. Thank you for hearing me. Last time, I mentioned that I have two driveways at 75 Crown Road, which is my residence. My north driveway is the narrowest of the two, and I've had three drive-off incidents on the edge of the driveway leaving marks in the concrete. Don't know who it was. I would assume it has to be a delivery vehicle of some type. That's my narrowest driveway, and I really need curbs on both driveways. I think we all do where we have narrow drives, so don't know if the city inspector has looked at that a second time. She was out once, so I would like to hear what your plan and the council's plan is to widen driveways and give us curbing to protect drivers against driving off and having an accident. We don't need that. So, it's either up to the city, or I'm going to have to put out some money on my own. I would prefer not to do that when XIT has created the situation for us. So, that's all I've got for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harold, I'm going to mess up your last name.
Okay. I forgive you for that one.
Staple your name and address, please.
I'm Harold Hosh. I'm at 79 Crown Road, and I gave a lot of thought about speaking here tonight because I've been living here for 34 years. I've been coming to council meetings off and on for 34 years, and if there's only been one constant that I've seen from results of coming to these meetings is that nothing ever gets done, and I'm sorry to have to say that because it pains me to do that. And that's the reason we start needing to have council members up here instead of just sitting there like nothing. Speak up at these meetings and let us hear what you have to say as well. And, okay, and the reason I say that at all is starting when I first moved here. When I got here 34 years ago, I spoke with the mayor, city manager, and they promised we won't have any lots less than one acre here, and we have a minimum of square footage on houses. Well, I think we all know how that's worked out, not well at all from that standpoint. And also, they're saying that, then they came back and said, "Well, we can't say no to builders," and that was told by me by someone sitting up there on that board right now that they can't say no to a builder. Well, that's got to change somewhere down the line. Now, the only thing I've ever seen really positive come back here is the water issue. We finally maybe got that settled down and fixed. But for the Crown Road issue, I've seen Crown Road paved repo, paved, potholes cleaned up and fixed up numerous times. It's because, why? The city wants to do everything on the cheap. The lowest bidder is not always the best bidder, and I think you need to address that. Another thing is with these roads that you put in and the ditches and the lack of the size of the driveways, it's had a big impact on my quality of life, and they may seem small to you, but they're not small to me. I had to plead and beg for a 12-foot drive expansion. I got curbs, okay? Well, what I really got was 8, 10 feet, 8 inches. I still run up against the curbs there, and it seems like nobody really cares on that thing, on that issue. So, I don't know what the entry level is to everybody sitting up here, but my suggestion is this: You go home, and if it's more than 10 feet, you mark off 10 feet on your drive, and you put up barriers so you can't get in there more than 10 feet so that you can know what we're having to go through. Until you drive through our drives and do what we have to do on a daily basis, you're not going to have any idea of what we're going and going through. It's the quality of life. Before that road was put in and that 10-foot canyon of a ditch, I could drive right through my yard in the little indentation I had for a ditch, no problem. I could load my lawnmower up. I could load any other heavy equipment I got by backing my truck up, putting the tailgate down, and driving right up in there. I can't do that today because of it, and it's because whoever approved that needs to have themselves looked at, and that's all the time I have.
Thank you. Mr. Brad McCurley.
Brad McCurley, 109 Trinity Drive. I'm going to talk and walk, if that's okay. Would you mind taking one down, passing around? So, this is my third time here. I don't want to sound like I'm repeating. Brad McCurley, 109 Trinity Drive. As I've mentioned before, I've walked our neighborhood in several of the places here in Willow Park. What the city had told us beforehand was that in regards to the driveway approaches, that they would be returning to at least the same size and shape that we had, and so when it wasn't, when ours was not, the city communicated, "I need to bring that before council." So, this is my third time now saying the same thing to council. But what I thought may be helpful is to walk around just my neighborhood and show you in some situations what was returned was consistent with what homeowners had previously. So, I just randomly picked driveways. So, the first one, so I just kind of want to walk you through some of these. The first one on page one shows pre-construction on the left, and our friends Google has the date that that was taken from a Google car. So, May 23rd. You see the size and the shape, and then you see this was taken a couple days ago, really early in the morning, of what the size and the shape look like after construction, which is great. That's awesome. It looks like the homeowner got exactly what they had before. If you flip over to page two, now, this was just easy because they're like right across the street from each other. You see what the homeowner had before, of May of '23, and then you see how their approach was extended and increased by adding about a foot on either side. Now, they did that with several approaches throughout Trinity Court and San Bass Court. I'm trying to think. I don't think anyone on Trinity Drive, if you flip over to page three, you will see Trinity Court, and again, you see the shape of the approach, but the issue we're having is the approaches were in a Y, and now they've kind of fanned out. So, if you follow the shape of it, we've had vehicles go off, and so you see they've added it. In fact, I talked to one homeowner. They said they didn't even ask for this, and the city gave it to them, which they were thankful for. And so, as you flip to page four, you see 109 Trinity Drive, the shape that was and the shape that is now. Now, you go, "Well, man, that goes out really far. That looks great." It's not drivable because for myself, for other people, and I have teenagers in the home, it's not drivable. So, again, what I'm asking is that the city return, if they won't return the size and the shape, they will at least do what they've done with other homeowners and add that extension in there so it's safe for us to get in and out of our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tara Hoops. I'm at 41 Crown Road. I think I was under the impression at first that we'd be speaking after decisions were made anyways, but I'm going to go ahead and just go ahead and give it a shot. My husband Eric Hoops has been very vocal about the speed limit, speed issue on Crown Road, so I'm just here kind of reiterating. I've spoke here once. I know my husband was here last time, and again, we need your help to help remedy this issue. I know during, I can't remember, I think it might have been the last meeting, there was a mention of, "It's just 38 miles per hour." I've got my daughter here. She plays outside. My son, multiple neighbor kids. And just to reiterate, it is a safety issue, and we would appreciate your help in terms of solving this issue. In addition, somebody else mentioned quality of life. It is a lot of stress on us as homeowners just watching the blatant disregard of speeding on a daily basis, and I understand that, you know, we have seen more Willow Park police officers out there, and we really do appreciate that, but unfortunately, as stated by Chief Franklin, that it is very tough to be there all the time to help deter the speeding on Crown Road. So, again, you know, thank you for your time, and I hope we can come up with a good solution for that, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Teresa Palmer.
My first time also. I'm sorry. I'm trying not to repeat, but we have the same issues, I guess. So, I'm going to clarify for everyone that I had 27, 29 feet. I had two entrances, circle drive. I had the approach that was 27 and 29 feet. I was taken to 10 feet. Then I called and complained it was taken to 12 feet. I'm not at 27, and I'm not at 29. So, I still, I called after I went from 10 to 12, and I said, "We're still dropping off the sides. Could you please help us?" And I was told by Gretchen, "No, you cannot." So, I'm not asking for anything that the city didn't take away. I'm asking the city do no harm to its citizens or their properties. Wire some singled out, some are not. There's no consistency with any of them. We were told 12 feet last time. There should be no difference. So, what I did to kind of help show the consistency or lack of consistency, you can see on these pictures I took today, 3550 Ranch House Road, 29 feet width, 101 Crown Road, 50 width, 932 Bass, San Bass Court, 34 width, 940 San Bass Court, 24 feet width, second page, 148 200 Drive, they have two driveways. One's 32-foot, one's 22-foot. Where's my 27 and 29? I'm still asking to be restored. Thank you very much.
Lisa Warehousing, 31 years living in Willow Park, first at 95 Crown and at 70 Crown since 2010. First of all, I also appreciate the efforts that have been made by some members of the council to listen and appreciate, and I ask that the others of you can have a little bit more empathy and understanding for the complaints that the rest of us have. Just a response to the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I have watched the video. An issue came up about we're asking you to enhance our driveways, and that is not the case. We're asking you to return the driveways to what they were previous. And in our particular driveway approach, my husband met with Mr. Grimes at the driveway back in February, I believe. He was invited to drive in our driveway back in February, and the rest of the council was invited at the May 14th council meeting. To my knowledge, no one has done so. I am again inviting any or all of you to drive northward on Crown Road, make a right turn into 70 Crown, making sure not to cross the double yellow line, preferably driving a full-size truck and with someone coming up behind you at 40 miles per hour. That happens very frequently. Next, hook up to a 16-foot trailer or even a longer trailer and try it again, also being careful to keep to the right of the double yellow line. Good luck with all of that. This right turn is at least 95% of the turns into our driveway by us and most of our family and friends. We have had unsolicited comments by delivery and service people about the narrow driveway. In just the last three weeks, this includes UPS, Schwan's Delivery, Barnum Landscape, and Teagirt Sprinkler Repair, and we were out of town for 10 of those days in the three weeks. Previously, we have had comments on the narrow driveway from friends who had no previous knowledge of the driveway issue. Friends and family who knew about it have commented, "Wow, that is narrow," like they really didn't believe us at first, but then they understood once they tried it. So, I'm just asking not for any special favors for return of our driveway to the shape it was. The little flaps at the end of the road extend it several feet, but like someone has briefly said, they are not drivable. If you drive on it, you will end up in the ditch. And just a response to something I heard from the last meeting, we are not wanting or requesting to have additional concrete ditches placed on Crown. I know a majority of us did not want concrete ditches to begin with and feel that the quaint country road we used to live on has been turned into a big city thoroughfare. Thank you for your time.
The item is installation of speed bumps on Crown Road. Mr. Grimes.
Yes. At the request of council, we were asked to look into asserting and putting speed bumps into Crown Road. Chief Franklin, do you have information? I'm going to take care of that later.
As far as the speed bumps?
Yes.
Speed bumps? The information that I have is what was given to me by Nick from Jacob and Mark. Jacob Martin basically shows the design, how to design the speed bumps, and then he's also got a map.
Chief, we'll let Nick, if you want to get into that.
I'm just saying that it's just the map and the installation is what I have. So, it's just our recommendation that the speed bumps be installed the way that Jacob Martin designs and their locations that they suggested them be placed at.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thanks, chief.
And just real briefly, the placement of those is roughly 500 feet apart. That's the recommended distance to achieve an 85th percentile speed of 30 miles per hour for this road. There's not one placed on the hill of Crown Road in between, so there is a spacing of 1,000 feet between those. That's because you can't put them on a grade above 8%, so it'd be unsafe to put a speed bump when you're slowing down the hill anyway. The detail shows the actual design of the speed hump. It is from the Federal Highway Administration. They have pretty good reference on how big, how wide. It is not shown to go into the bike lanes of Crown Road. They recommend that it can, but that's really a preference up to the city if they wanted to go into the bike lanes halfway or not. And the advanced warning symbols on the road on the right side of that detail are optional, just shown for y'all's education. That's it, pretty simple.
Any questions?
How many speed humps in total? Are we looking at?
Seven.
Seven? And that covers the complete width of the road?
Correct. You're about 300 feet in on the north side of Crown Road, and you're about 250 feet in from the south end of Crown Road where we start. Those advanced warning paintings on the road are 100 feet long, so in order to make those advanced warning strips pass that road from the west to turn onto Crown Road, that's where it'll fit in. But it does cover the entire width of Crown except the hill. That's the only place where the spacing is over 500 feet.
So on that recommendation for the bike lanes, is that something that you think that we should go all the way across, or what's the?
The recommendation that the Federal Highway Administration puts forth is, if you don't put them there, it sort of promotes what they call gutter running, when somebody just drives on the side of the road. If you do put them in the bike lanes, then the biker has less of a bike lane, but it tapers into the bike lane, so it's not untravelable terrain. It's just a little bit of an obstacle for someone riding their bike on a designated bike lane. So I really don't have a recommendation there, other than it's, they said it's entirely preference, right? People are gonna squeeze into the bike lane anyway, so you might as well leave it open for bikers, but.
Okay. I was gonna say, you're gonna have one wheel on the hump, even if you're trying to.
Exactly, yeah. No matter what you're gonna go.
And hopefully slowing down for that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was what I was curious is.
But it tapers off to the side of the street.
Yes, sir. If you go to the detail, the bottom left image, it's a little bit hard to see. So the section BB, the top is flat, and then it tapers into the sides at the end. So where you're touching the bike lane, you're grounded. You're flat. So if you wanted to go in, you'd only be a couple inches into the bike lane, a couple inches vertically into the bike lane.
Okay.
So a question, something like that, if we have emergency vehicles, what's the impact? Especially if you got, say, an ambulance, though, anything north of the city, that's the main path for an ambulance to get to the hospital down here in an emergency.
Correct.
What are we expecting as an impact, or?
And Officer Franklin presented this last time, but the Federal Highway Administration says three seconds for an unburdened ambulance and 10 seconds for a burdened ambulance, so someone in the back of that ambulance. That's roughly the delay per speed hump. So there's seven here. If there's an ambulance with a person in the back, that's 70 seconds, roughly.
All right. Okay, any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the installation of speed humps on Crown Road.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any other questions?
Lid, you have a number, or you wanna do that up too?
In accordance with what Jacob Martin has recommended.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you, thank you. Item number three, consider maintenance on city right-of-ways on Crown and Ranch House Road. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, we have been, let me pull this one up. So we did mow the right-of-way approximately 30 days ago. It's set to continue our contract at least through October 31 to be mowed at least one time a month, or as needed, or as required. One of the considerations as far as the right-of-way itself is a concrete ribbon, or hydromulch, or even sod. Because of, it's more than $50,000, we're gonna rule out sod, because that's, puts us into putting sod in sometime in August, and so we'd have to bid that out. So timing on that's not really good for us to install the sod. The concrete ribbon, I think you had some communications with Colonel Hoops.
Yeah, Colonel Hoops got back with me, and I really appreciate his due diligence on that, with really, he kind of surveyed a lot of the neighbors on Crown, and he said, in his opinion, the consensus was that everybody wanted hydromulch Bermuda put on Crown, and that would be where I'm at on that.
We can do Crown Road, I don't believe Ranch House, I think there's enough vegetation there to not hydromulch at this time. We can hydromulch Crown under $50,000 threshold for bidding. Ballpark figure, I asked Michelle to do that. It's probably, we're probably looking at 25,000 to put hydromulch into water on a consistent basis.
You said include water?
Mm-hmm. Water, if you have a water truck out there. I think it's either once a day or maybe twice a day, but.
For how long?
30 days.
Do we, you said you, basically you've seen that Ranch House has vegetation, are you saying that Crown does not have vegetation?
There's some areas that probably, I would think the Bermuda or whatever's there will eventually take over the right-of-way. But there are some areas that are bare.
Okay. So we're considering mulch and watering on Ranch House Road, and we're mowing also.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How's that affect to the city budget?
We have a mowing contract, and we will amend it. When we do the new contract in the next fiscal year, we will add that into it. The cost itself is not too prohibitive.
Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
Brian, how do we wanna say that?
So what's, we look at two things here, both the mowing and the hydromulch.
A suggested motion, if I may, would be to move to authorize staff to install hydromulch and water Crown Road, and then add the maintenance of Crown Road and Ranch House Road to the current mowing contract.
Should we not break those into two separate actions?
You can.
We'll do it one action.
Would you prefer one or two, Pat?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
One action.
I'll make a motion to go with our city's recommendation for hydromulch Bermuda with watering on Crown Road, and also to amend, to add Crown and Ranch House Road mowing services.
Thank you.
To the one contract.
Yeah, to the contract.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. This will take effect immediately.
Yes, both have hydromulch. I think we can have that done maybe in the next seven to 10 days.
Okay, thank you. Next item, to consider the expansion of driveway approaches for the 2022 street projects.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, staff has looked into this. We've asked Jacob and Martin, as well as our own research. There is no engineering justification for a driveway approach that's greater than 12 feet. I think some of the comments made tonight are talking about the concrete apron, where the street butts up to the driveway itself. Those are typically 20-plus feet. If you had a 26-foot driveway approach and a 10-foot gate, it would be almost three times the size of the entry. So I think they're talking more along the lines of the approach. On Crown, I think we extended the road on it. I know we did on Ranch House, and so there's actually more concrete on that approach. When we measure driveway, or that apron, excuse me, when we measure driveway approaches, it's at the property line itself. So where the driveway meets the property line is where we measure. That is at at least 12 feet, or it's gone back to 14 feet. My recommendation is to put the traffic calming measures in, the speed bumps, the speed humps, see what that does, see if it has an effect, and then reevaluate at a later We don't simply, any extension of the driveway would be an arbitrary number. So obviously, we do whatever council tells us to do, and we can act accordingly when we're prepared to move either way. But my recommendation would be to put the humps in, see what happens to the speed control measures, and then reevaluate.
We need a motion on that?
I'd like.
Or do we just table?
I'd like some discussion.
Can I have one question? Has Jacob Martin surveying, engineering confirmed that all of the driveway meet the standard? Has, I don't know, correction's here.
Here's Derek.
Okay, I was under the impression.
Yeah, there's one.
That there is one driveway that does not meet the standard that will.
11-6. All the others were either widened to 12, or were already.
And there's one that's not?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
We have a method to measure if these speed humps are gonna slow it down. You know, do we have something in place for that? I know it's kind of off-chopping, but.
Do we have?
Well, will we, I'm gonna say, that was one of my questions, too. Will we, after the speed humps are installed, I guess it was a question on that one, but it's appropriate for this, how long will it take to get the speed humps in, and can we do another survey, speed survey, to determine whether we are slowing the speeds down to 30? If your recommendation is to.
Yes.
Reassess, then how long is that before we can reassess?
I think the timeline would go somewhere along, and maybe Michelle, is Michelle still Or Chase? Installation on the speed humps is, what, 60 days, 90 days?
I'm gonna say it's supposed to be nine, because I don't know when we get.
Yeah, so we're gonna order one piece, we're not putting the asphalt in. It's one piece, and you just bolt it into the concrete. So we're gonna have to order seven of those, and then probably another. Are we, is Chase installing them? Are you gonna install the speed humps? You or somebody, right?
Yeah. We need to move that, install more.
Okay. Figure 90 days for that. I'd figure another 30 to 60 to let the traffic adjust, and then come back out and do another 30-day result with the speed hump.
Will the installation of the speed humps shut down Crown Road?
Momentarily. I mean, it wouldn't be a, it's not gonna be a long-term shutdown, right?
But we'll let everybody know?
Yes.
Good.
Can I get with you later? This is not a good time to answer a quest, a question. Can I get with you later?
Well.
Go ahead.
I just like to explain to us how speed humps are going to help the, whatever we want to call it, not really the approach, apparently, the apron, and how the shape of it, if they start. But we can.
So, if I may, I think the issue has been, and this is the information that I've just taken from you guys over the last three meetings, a lot of y'all have been using the barnage as a quasi entryway to your property. You've been what I would call cutting the corner to get in there. When we made that ditch deeper, that's no longer available to you. And so it's more of a deal of the turning radius than anything else. And I don't know if making that wider is necessarily gonna solve it. The issue with the speed hump is, to your point that you suggested earlier, that people are driving 40 miles an hour and trying to turn into your driveway is difficult. I did, if I may, I did, in fact, turn into your driveway this morning in a three-quarter or a half-ton pickup. I had to turn it.
Bring this to order, we can't have this. Come on.
Thank you, sir.
We'll talk to you after the meeting. Thank you.
What?
We can't have it.
Can I make a motion, and then we discuss?
I was just gonna, for a point of clarification, talking property line versus right-of-way or easement and anything like that, and where we measure, are we talking where the street, because obviously they have the apron that comes out, and there's been many examples of those being larger. We're talking, we're talking at the property line where we've measured past anything that would be the drainage, correct?
Yes.
In most cases?
Yes.
Okay, so to me, it's maybe just a point of clarification, where it's really, like you said, the apron, the Y, the shape, that's more the issue that they're, we've been presented with, than it is the actual, when we say you have 12 feet at the property line, it's not an issue of where it is when it gets to that 12-foot mark. It's really an issue of the shape to the actual entrance. Do we have?
Is there a quantifiable that if the apron is wider? I don't think there's a standard out there that, I mean, did y'all find anything in your research that if we made a 16-foot apron, that it makes the returning radius easier?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, we didn't quantify that, but you know, the wider, the larger the turn radius at each side of that driveway, the more surface you're gonna have on those. But you can see on your screen, I mean, we ran it on the required turn radius for a large passenger vehicle, and that's why we ran it off of.
We can certainly, I mean, look, we can certainly come back and extend the approaches at a later date. I think the first thing I'd like to do is get the speed under control, because clearly that's an issue, and we just did that with our motion. You're probably looking at a quarter of a million dollars to expand at four feet for each one, and I would like to see if the traffic calming measures would work first before we go off and spend a quarter of a million dollars.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we have all of discussion, before motion, I'd like to make the motion to postpone the action item for expansion of driveway approaches to allow staff to see if there is a standard for turning radius or width that would be more appropriate for this road that we could implement, because right now, we absolutely don't have anything concrete to act on as far as extending them. So I'd like to have staff prepare a different standard that we can analyze and know specifically which driveways, and I know this is a long motion, but I'd like to postpone the expansion of driveway approaches to allow staff to prepare a different standard for us to consider for driveway approaches.
Approaches or apron?
The driveway approaches includes the apron.
Okay.
I'd like to amend that to include, after the speed calming, to see the impact of that, too, as part of that motion. That okay?
I think we have to vote on them, have to have a second.
Let's postpone.
Have a second for the motion.
Let's use.
I'll second the motion, then I'd like amendment to incorporate the speed calming and see the impact of that.
All right.
All right, somebody get all that.
I'll make a second to his amendment. I don't have an amended motion, sorry, just trying to be, trying to get it correct. For Crystal.
Give me just a second.
Give me just a second.
We need to wait until, we've already gone through all the question-answer stuff. We're accommodating, we're postponing this to, we're not killing it.
I just wanna know if you're supposed to put it back the way it was, or if you're just.
That's what we're gonna look at. We're gonna look at that.
I didn't stop.
We're postponing it to, for staff's recommendation, come back and see what we might need to do.
There can't be, we have a motion on the table that we talked about.
We give, come on.
And if I may, as a point of order, just everything that we've done, where the actual, like, on that diagram where that black line is correct, is everything we have is twelve feet, at least, in width from there. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the exception.
With the exception of one, correct. I don't feel like any topic I heard tonight was about anything from that point back. Everything else is about that point forward, which is the apron, which to me, when we're telling the public that we've met our twelve-foot obligation, that's what we're saying. And now we're trying to say, okay, this portion may need to be reevaluated now, because that was not the portion that, I think there has just been a miscommunication, misunderstanding. I, for one, didn't necessarily get that it was the apron so much as it was the, like, when we say the approach versus the apron versus the property line. And so that's where I think a lot of our confusion has come in, and just want to say that when we say we've met that standard, I feel that we are confident that we have met that twelve-foot at that point. Now, the other point may need to be reevaluated, as Mayor Protim has said.
And that's, and I mean, that's where we're kind of going. It's, there's not a, and maybe we'll find this out, maybe Derek or someone has, but if you're trying to make this apron right here, you make it thirty feet, you know, it's.
I'm not saying make it thirty feet.
Yeah.
To say evaluate based on.
Yeah.
Well, the, at the purpose behind my motion is, we cannot go out and arbitrarily just look at every driveway and add something. If we have a different standard we need to meet, we need staff to present that standard.
Yes.
And then we can apply it to each individual driveway. And some driveways were larger than twelve feet, so, you know, we don't, we met what was there. But I think that that's my point, is staff has to come up with a different recommendation past what this is. And otherwise, we're just still arbitrarily saying, this one doesn't look right, this one needs to be different. So if they can come up with one that we have a new number, or a new measurement that they can survey and say, this has to have another foot, this has to have a curve, that's what I'm asking for them to come back with those type of recommendations, so it's not arbitrary at the moment.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question.
We're not taking any more questions.
You, so Greg, you amended the motion to wait till the speed humps are installed and reevaluate, correct?
Right.
And Leah, you amended your motion, you amended his motion.
I seconded his amendment.
Okay, okay.
To give you a nice, clean motion.
Are we ready, Crystal? All in favor? Thank you. Next item is to approve a speed hump installation policy. Michelle.
Counsel, while I was gone on vacation, the chief was very nice to look at several cities' speed hump policies and why the process of putting them in, the request to put them in. And he put something together for us. Bill and I think this is a very solid policy. The only thing we are requesting is, Bill wanted to change, and I gave a copy to all y'all, so that it says the fire department, being the fire marshal in our case, the police department, being the police chief, and the city manager could veto any speed hump requests. Y'all have questions about it, I'll be happy to answer. Our chief can answer, okay?
I do have one question. And so in this future policy, residents must, eighty percent of the residents must request the speed humps on the roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Does not involve Crown Road, we've already covered on that. But it does say that a speed hump under location on streets, item number three, a speed hump shall not be located in front of or immediately adjacent to a property if a resident of that property objects to its placement. Does that refer to the twenty percent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you are one of the twenty percent and you object, it won't be in front of your house.
Right.
It will have to be moved.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's how it reads. I just wanted to confirm that you still have control of what's in front of your house. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Michelle?
Does this also talk about the type of speed hump, whether it would be one that's permanent, one that could be removed if we needed?
So that's left to the discretion of public works, depending on what we feel is needed there. So that's how we left it in this, though.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the speed hump installation policy.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number six, consider and take action on an ordinance accepting a petition to expand the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include a 3.208 acre tract of, and a 228.4 acre tract of land owned by Brothers and Christ Properties LLC.
Yes, this is a 3.2, I missed that, yes, 3.208 acre tract located approximately at the corner of 1187 and Bankhead Highway. They've requested water and sewer services, which we will provide once it's in the ETJ. The service agreement will provide terms and services, including the immediate annexation of the city of Willow Park. Owner of the property is Bryson Adams, one of the owners. He's here for any questions that you guys may have on the three-acre tract.
I definitely feel any questions, Mayor Moss, City Council. Good to be on this end, and hopefully in a good position tonight, so.
Any questions for Bryson?
Pat, did you have any issues with the annexation request?
No, we're starting it, and of course, we're in the middle of potential other annexation that's a little closer towards Willow Park on Bankhead. And of course, that's originally scheduled, it started off in June. So that could be coming up in kind of an interim annexation before this. So this one, we have to get, this is a little separate from this, is the ETJ. Right now, they're not in the ETJ of any city. This is both a three-acre tract and a 228 acre tract. So both of them have been released from other cities' ETJs, and so they've requested now, which they have a right to, in our ETJ. So this is the first step in the annexation process. The next agenda item will be their petition. And, but, that's kind of the, we have to get text, to get to 1187, we have to get text dot permission, and that's a little bit of a delay, because text dot yet, they won't petition us, so we have to just send them notice for the annexation. And if they don't object in the sixty-day period after notice, then we can, so it slows down things a little bit with text dot laws.
Are there any, accepting this petition, are there hearings that come up with this specific petition, or is this?
No, not on the ETJ expansion. This is the final act you will take on the ETJ expansion. The public hearings will be on the annexation, or it's going to be, there'll be five public hearings. We'll all have them all at the same meeting, but they'll all be, they'll have two on each of the roads, and one on the front.
Okay, thank you.
Is the motion on top of page twenty-six here, is that the motion?
The ordinance.
Ordinance.
Pat, do you need to read that caption?
You can, yes.
Yes.
Leah, you wanna make the motion?
Oh, I thought you, were you gonna read the ordinance caption?
I was gonna wait for a motion.
I'll make.
To approve it, and then I'll read, or you want me to read it first?
Yeah, easily read it.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Willow Park, Texas, accepting the inclusion of the herein described property into the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Willow Park and extending the boundary limits of said extraterritorial jurisdiction to include said herein described property and granting to all inhabitants of said property all rights and privileges offered by the law in binding said inhabitants by all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, laws, and regulations of the City of Willow Park and the state that may be applied or enforced.
We have the ordinance, we need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, consider and take action on a resolution declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of approximately 7,313 feet comprising 10.98 acres of East Bankhead Highway, directing city staff to prepare a service plan and scheduling two public hearings for the proposed annexation. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, we went to Commissioners Court yesterday, and the court approved, yeah, there, got mixed up. The Commissioners Court approved us annexing Bankhead Highway for approximately 7,000 feet. This will go to the corner of 1187 and Bankhead. And we are, we're establishing a public hearing, is that correct, Pat?
Yeah, well, this is the resolution that will declare our intent to begin annexation of Bankhead. It will also set the direct staff to prepare a service plan for the area. We've talked with the county, and they want to see some things in the service plan, so we'll essentially negotiate that with them, and then we'll set two public hearings on the annexation of Bankhead, which will, in this revised resolution, is August 13, 2024.
Okay, we have a, the ordinance on top of page forty for someone to make a motion.
Resolution. Resolution.
Page forty-one. Can you read it, Crystal?
I'm sorry, it's page forty-one.
Resolution declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of approximately 7,313 feet east of Bankhead Highway right-of-way compromising approximately 10.98 acres of land into the territorial limits of the city of Willow Park, directing city staff to prepare a service plan for the extension of the municipal services to proposed annexation area and setting two public hearings on annexation.
Thank you. The resolution's been read, do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to, as presented, I'm sorry, as presented by, as read by city.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Does this impact the county's rebuilding of Bankhead?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're still proceeding with that as planned?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was, I'd asked that earlier on, but that's the bond, the traffic bond? Or not, yeah, that's what I thought.
We have a motion, did we have a second?
Right here, second.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, consider and take action on a resolution accepting the annexation petitions from Brothers and Christ Properties LLC requesting annexation of the following two tracts of land, directing city staff to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement and scheduling a public hearing on the proposed annexation. One tract being approximately 3.208 acres of land, more or less, and the HT and B R Railroad Company survey. Abstract number 647, and the heirs of Francisco Sanchez survey. Abstract, abstract 2346, and being a portion of that tract of land by deed described by deed to Brothers and Christ Properties LLC as recorded in document number 202400902. Deed records, Parker County, Texas. And one tract being approximately 228.4 acres of land, more or less, and the F H Hammond survey, abstract number 673. The heirs of Francisco Sanchez survey, abstract number 2346. The HT and B R Company survey, abstract number 647, and the J Beach and Seanott survey, abstract number 2091, Parker County, Texas, being a portion of that tract of land described by deeds, by deed to Brothers and Christ Properties LLC as recorded in document number 202400902. Deed records, Parker County, Texas.
Similar to the previous agenda item with the three acres, this is 232 acres adjacent to that. And again, the request of water and sewer services. This is a petition to be included into the ETJ. I believe we have a public hearing set on this for the twenty, is that the revised resolution, though?
Yeah, this is, it'll all be the, now it's gonna be on August 13.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the original.
August 13.
And of course, that's subject to text dots agreement, and of course, they have sixty days, so it could push us back a little bit, but it shouldn't.
Okay. Crystal, you wanna read the resolution, please?
A resolution accepting two petitions from the property owner Brothers and Christ Properties LLC requesting annexation of two tracts of land and approximately 3.208 acre tract and approximately 228.24 acre tract, setting a date, time, and place for the public hearing on proposed annexation, directing city staff to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement with the property owner pursuant to section 43 dot 0672 of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing and directing the city secretary of the City of Willow Park to publish a notice of such a public hearing.
Thank you. Ordinance has been read, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, any other questions or discussion?
I would just like to request that when we have that public hearing, if we could make sure that staff has a presentation on the impact to water, wastewater, and any legal issues that we think might come. So if we could just include that in the presentation, so we know more, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, correct? Any other question or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Congratulations. Next item, to consider and approve acceptance of the closeout of the wastewater effluent line contract, TWDB CWSRF number 73890 CID 01. Michelle?
Counsel, this is just a formality. We accepted, me being staff, accepted the effluent line from the new treatment plant to Squaw Creek Golf Course, I believe on April 29. In order to finish out this part of the contract, we just need y'all to approve us accepting that.
Is water flowing yet?
Yes. They haven't, they haven't turned it on, but it's ready to go.
It's ready, yeah. I think he has slowed it just a little bit, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the closeout of the wastewater effluent line contract, TWDB CWSRF number 73890 CID 01.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Michelle? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to consider all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, this is authorize the staff to issue a notice in the paper for Friday of our intentions to issue debt for water and wastewater improvements. This includes a number of items, including upsizing of a lift station, killing out a, is it a force main or a gravity? Force main sewer line, and rerouting that, that's the big haul of this project. Also rerouting and adding some water lines to the system. We have preliminary debt schedules on your, for you. We have a twenty-year and a thirty-year amortization. We don't have to make that decision tonight, but this is just for illustration purposes. Staff feels comfortable that we can manage the debt on this project, and we recommend, or we ask, that y'all authorize us to run the ad.
All right, if I understand correctly, we are issuing the intent, we're publishing it, we will have further discussion on all of what this contains.
Yes.
After we publish that.
The ad noted, the ad does say that it will issue debt, our intention is to issue debt on August 13.
And that will have a public hearing as well?
Yes.
That staff will present all that additional info.
And we will have Maha. And we will have, Maha will probably, when we get a better idea on interest rates and things of that nature, and things that y'all, that you particularly love, we'll have that presentation for you. We will not, as with any debt issuance, not have a final interest rate until we close, but we'll have a good idea.
Specifics of what this involves, construction lines and stuff, will be covered later, okay?
Yep.
Starting the clock.
Okay, do we have a motion? Any other questions, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to, where's the comment there? Where, lost my train. Make a motion to authorize staff to approve a publication and posting of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, and, is that what we need? Is that the wording properly?
The suggested motion's on page sixty-three.
Oh, I don't have it in front of me.
I'm sorry.
That was, wow.
Sorry, go ahead. All right, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving authorization, publication, and posting of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in amount not to exceed 5.135 million for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for the construction, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improving water and wastewater system, properties or facilities, and the acquisition of land and rights of way thereof.
Okay, we have a motion? Is that the, that was the motion, right?
That was the motion.
Greg made the motion, you seconded. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. City Council comments.
I appreciate staff's work on all the effort behind the scenes for the actions this afternoon or this evening for the annexation, so, great job.
To the citizens with the driveways, I think the council made a statement tonight that this is not a debt issue, so we will revisit it and hopefully come up with some sort of solution that everybody can live with. So I'd like, I'd like to tell everyone that. So, the next thing, I'd like to congratulate the city of Alito this evening on the groundbreaking for their new city hall facility. Mayor Nick Stanley and his team have worked very hard to make this happen for their city, and we wish them best, wish them the best during construction and hope they enjoy their new building. They just had a groundbreaking recently, so good luck to them. Mr. Grimes?
Staff will be going to PFA training tomorrow, so we will be out the rest of this week. We will be closing city hall in addition to July 4th on July 5th. We've had roughly fifty percent of the staff request that day off, and so we made the decision to just close on July 5th. That could impact the July 9th meeting. I will let Bill make that decision as I'll be on vacation the week that we'd be posting the agenda. And then I want to make the announcement, it's going to take a while to go into effect. We received the letter of retirement of Candy Scott this week. Candy has been with the city for twenty-five years. I know Jean served with her a few times. She's been in quite a few buildings. She was in the original city hall that was now, that's now Park, and so we look forward to celebrating her career at a later date, but I want to make the council aware, Candy has issued her letter of retirement.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Motion adjourn.